Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti. We don't, we won't have Commissioner Parenti with us this, this evening. Paul Kaplan.
Hi, sorry.
Kevin Cornell, Judy Smith, Jack DeMergen. I'll take care of it for you.
You got it.
Just in case you forgot who we were.
Well, I'm glad I remembered all your names.
Yeah. It used the hell out of me, I gotta thank.
All right. First item on our agenda this evening is a review of the minutes from the March five, twenty twenty-three meeting. That was a long time ago, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have.
Sorry, just, just our agenda. I had just a few things. Um, I'll start. Uh, under old business, the second line, twenty-year statute of limitations on the court judgment. Instead of saying court judgment, I think it'd be better to say permanent injunction. And two lines down from there, after the word limitations, I would put the word applicable. The permanent court order is still enforceable, and there is no statute of limitations applicable. The, under new business, the first line, Commissioner Parenti and the other commission members reviewed the plan of conservation and development. Actually, I think it's reviewed the RFP regarding the twenty twenty-four update of the plan of And I think the last thing I have is, uh, at the bottom of the page, last paragraph, first line, Mr. DeMergen reported that firelight. Is, I just wondered, is that the current, is that what we're calling it, or what, what do they call it?
Firelight comments, yeah.
Firelight, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Fine, I just wanted to, I just wasn't quite sure if they had decided to call it something else, but, but that was all I had. Anybody else? Okay, somebody prepared a move that we?
So move, uh, move to approve the minutes dated to, I'm sorry, March fifth, September? March fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
As amended.
We have a motion.
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Jack, anything under old business? I mean, Jack, commission members, anything under old business?
Just the, um, update on the, uh, the update on the twenty-year, uh, argument, they came to the conclusion that, uh, the injunction was enforceable?
Correct, yeah, so I sat down with Attorney Marino, um, and we went over that court judgment as well as a nineteen forty-six variance approval, uh, that was still active on the property. Um, and I know I provided everyone with a copy of it, but we did issue a cease and desist, um, on two seventeen Derby Ave, um, that encompassed, um, any vehicle work that is not considered light repair work in those, um, judgments that we have on file. Uh, it identifies the receipt, storage, and repair of wrecked vehicles being stored on the property as, um, you know, a violation of that order, as well as doing any bodywork slash painting.
The variance didn't cover any of that?
The variance, no, it, it, the order, we pretty much use the language directly from the order, and the variance used that language before that court order.
Wow, okay.
So, i- it's very consistent throughout those documents. So, uh, that's, that's what we included here. And, you know, pretty much everything that was listed in there that we were obviously able to enforce has been put in this.
And Vinnie, Vinnie reviewed?
Absolutely, yep, he sat down with me, um, we reviewed it, sent it out on March thirteenth. Um, I believe it is going to be, um, appealed, um, nothing's been formally submitted yet, but it most likely will end up in front of the ZBA.
Okay. Um, go, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I just, if we're gonna, uh, do this instead of during your report, but the, uh,
Either way.
Either way. Uh, I had just had two questions. One, at the end of the, uh, cease and desist order, it mentions that, uh, our board has some sort of, uh, ability to, uh, do further action, and I wasn't aware that we had any.
It's, it's the agent of the board, that's, that's really just how they identify me as the agent.
I didn't pick up on a comment you read.
So, it, what we include at the end of our is furthermore, additional legal action can be taken by the TPZC, which may result in higher fines and penalties. That's really just our cookie cutter, you know, agent of the board, or the board can decide to take further action if we decide we need to go to court or anything like that.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know that I understood it quite that way.
Uh, that, that, well, that's not what the English says, so that's why they don't understand it that way.
Right.
It seems to indicate that.
No, I mean, I, I didn't understand it, I, I didn't think we had any jurisdiction, really.
We, we don't, or, the, the board does not have jurisdictional power over what?
But you, you do.
I do, yes, and I am the agent, I am the agent of the board. Understood, yeah.
So, and this is more for my own curiosity. Uh, what, where does the hundred dollars a day come from?
It's a state statute, so you, you can't fine more than a hundred dollars per day per violation.
Per violation?
Per violation, yes.
Does it have an, a, a maximum price?
No, it can keep going. If a violation is in existence for ten years, it's a hundred dollars a day for ten years.
So theoretically, if someone decided that they wanted to pay thirty-six thousand dollars a year to break the law, they could do it?
If they, at the end of every year, they forked up that money, then, then yes, I mean, usually people do not, but we, we try to take legal action before.
Yeah, and you can take legal action, I mean.
Right. Even if they only end up owing us five, five hundred dollars, we can take them to court for it to discourage this kind of thing in the future.
I don't think you can, by paying the fine, avoid the prospects of a lawsuit.
Right.
To enforce the cease and.
We don't have to wait for the fines to get up to thirty-six thousand dollars, we can act on it really whenever we want.
I was just, you know, not being in that realm, I don't understand the mechanism of compliance, and I don't know that anyone's.
A zoning action is not a means to immediate relief, that is what I always tell people. Someone can take this violation notice and immediately solve all the problems identified, or they can throw it right in the trash. If they do that, obviously, it's not just going away, but they've decided they don't want to come into compliance, we start fining them and eventually take it to court. But it's not like we.
That ain't quick.
We can't go on the property and clean it up if they decide not to do that, so that's, that's really the, the order of operations, unless somebody appeals my decision, which then it would go to the ZBA first, so.
All right, well, I, I have another question. Um, moving on for a second.
Yeah.
Uh, when do you put the ad for the town planner advisor in the, wherever it goes?
We, we did, so that, that will also be, that will also be during my report, but we have, uh,
I'm not saying anything.
We have the RFP posted, uh, with the reg, with Scrog on our own website, it was put out to bid.
You gotta make your own agenda.
Yeah, I know. I'll call Paul before the meeting, so. Um, and then we also have it posted on a listserv through Yukon, which is actually, uh, actually Glenn was the one who suggested it, and that is really where most municipalities end up posting these things. Apparently, that's the best spot where these planning consultants are always monitoring. So that was posted last week in all of those places.
And we have floods of.
I can't say I have, have had any interest just yet, but it, it has been posted.
I'm waiting for your report to find out.
Right, okay, yeah, that'll come later, but I haven't had any responses just yet, but it's, it's probably been up less than a week, so.
Okay, getting back to Derby Avenue, one more question. How many violations did you cite them for?
There are three issues, uh, outlined in here, um, one being any motor vehicle, uh, or similar, any motor vehicle repair or similar activities beyond the limited repair work authorized in the nineteen forty-six variance violates the Orange zoning regs. Basically, they have a repair license there, but that repair license through the state authorizes them for more than they're allowed to do on this property by that, that judgment. So we identify that and say, you know, you might be licensed, but by our town code, you are not, you know, that was not a grandfathered in use. Um, and then we have the receipt and storage, uh, of repair, of wrecked and junked vehicles, which was the predominant number of vehicles on the property. Um, I think if we are able to get, you know, that taken care of, I think it'll, it'll make a big difference, but that was, um, one of the bigger ones, and then the body and bodywork and, and paint, not allowed to be, uh, done on the property. Which again, those were all directly taken out of those, those documents referenced in this, in this letter.
And the operation of a, you know, a, a regional towing service out of there?
It's, none of that was identified in, in the, the orders, you know, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and what they are identified in those orders is what we cited them for. You know, there's really no other language that I can cite or, you know, use to, as leverage, you know?
So is that because when that initial permanent injunction came about, there were no towing activities? Is that an assumption?
I can't, I can't confirm that, I, I think there have been towing activities here long before that ninety-one injunction, and, you know, it doesn't go into, if that's the case, it doesn't go in.
Changes the tenor of that particular part of it, right?
Right, you know, it doesn't say, oh, it can only have one tow truck, it doesn't to, it doesn't touch on that. You know, our regs don't say you can only have two tow trucks, as long as they're registered and operable and they are owned by the owner of the property, you know, the, it, none of the, there's no language, you know, preventing that.
So if they're fined per violation per day, it could be up to three hundred?
It could be up to three hundred dollars.
That would be the max, yeah.
Okay, anything else on?
Uh, not for old business, no.
All right, we'll, we'll see what happens, right? It's early yet. All right, anything, uh, else under old business? How about under new business? Okay, then, Jack, uh.
I will like to point out here, though, that I made this part of it much shorter.
Is there anything left for you to report on?
The only thing I have left is Firelight did get their CO, um, so they are having people move in, um, and they're.
Having residential?
Was, yes, they, they are having residential tenants.
Is that affordable? One of those, is that portion of port affordable, zero?
Zero.
Cause a couple of, they've lowered the price on some of them, I, I know somebody went in.
Just on some of the individual units?
Yeah, I, I don't know if they lowered it, but I mean, people have gotten in there for, um, much lower than other people, same kind of unit, more than double the, the rent.
Oh, that's, that's interesting. Yeah, there's, there's no affordability, uh, component with, with Firelight.
Uh, maybe with section eight, that's it.
Do you have any, uh, any commercial uses yet there?
Not to my knowledge, no, I know they have two restaurant fit-outs there, but they have not shared with me or any other, uh, you know, member of, of the town at least that I know of, who those tenants could be, or what they're looking for specifically.
Did we have any condition of approval that that had to happen in conjunction with the leasing?
I don't believe so, no.
So they could take their time.
Yeah, probably makes sense to get the residential portion up and running before you put the retail stuff in. All right. Then, uh, that's it for everything except our public hearing tonight. We have, uh, one, one public hearing, let's begin, Paul, by having you read the, uh, legal notice, if you would.
Yeah, sure. Uh, to appear one time on Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and one time on Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Orange TPZC, notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM, at the Orange Town Hall, six seventeen Orange Center Road. The Orange Town Plan Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. Petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by Racebrook Medical Center LLC to amend section three eighty-three, one eighty-eight of the Orange zoning regulations. A copy of this notice has been filed on, with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department dated in Orange, Connecticut, this fifth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, is the applicant here? Why don't you come on up to the, somebody come up to the podium. Now, if you could introduce yourself and, uh, tell us about the application that we?
Yep, my name's Mike Romano, I'm with Racebrook Medical Center. Um, this, uh, application is related to the sign regs. Um, it's an alternative to the pylon signs in the commercial zone, uh, changing the height
My name is Gary Richatelli, I'm also with Racebrook Medical, um, assisting Mike on this.
Okay. So tell us what the proposed amendment is to the regs, and why it's important.
Yeah, so the sign regs are a little outdated, I think, um, we're looking to, right now, a ground sign is capped at three feet, and unless you go above ten feet, and we're looking to change that so that you can go up to ten feet from the ground, provided that you're not, um, a negative effect on health, safety, and welfare.
So, so as it's, I mean, you're not, you're not proposed, yeah, I mean, you're, you're leaving in, um, the, the existing regulations, which basically says that when you put up a ground sign, you can't have anything, any sign between three feet and ten feet, so there's seven feet.
Right.
Where there can be no sign, but you're saying you want to create an exception to that?
Add an exception, that would be the new reg.
Yeah, that would be the new, the amendment, create an exception to the existing reg, uh, basically, um, where, where you can have, uh, a sign that, that goes from three feet to ten feet, no break, or, you know, we don't have that seven-foot break, uh, if the ground sign is not located within twenty feet of any street, correct?
Correct.
And, and the commission, and the commission finds that this height, size, and location doesn't have a negative effect on health, safety, welfare, and that, I think, I think that's the entirety of what you're looking for, right?
So it's gotta be, it's gotta be twenty-foot setback as part of this reg?
Right, there, with, with that setback, that would allow you to have a, your, a portion of your display between that three and, and ten feet.
Is that twenty feet from the state property line, or the pavement?
From the street line.
Our regs refer to the street-side property line as the street line, so we could say it's from the property line, not the edge of road pavement, at least how it's currently written.
So as a defined term in our regs, street line is the boundary between private property and the right of.
Correct, is the actual property line. You know, if, if your intent was the edge of road pavement, we should make that, you know, clear in here, because the edge of road pavement and the property line could be very different things.
Right.
Right, so, the, while I was not here when these old regulations were drafted, the, the numbers, uh, correspond with concerns in the Connecticut DOT Highway manual guy, Highway Manual Guidelines, which are that when you're computing sightline distances for, uh, safe egress and ingress out of driveways onto roadways, uh, you measure from three feet, because that's the assumed sightline distance for, for a person in a car in a vehicle.
Person's eyes are in.
The person's eyes are at three feet. The, the national standards, which are ASHTO, you know, get a lot more complicated than the state regs, cause they take into account the road, whether it's grade coming down, grade going up, but Connecticut's Connecticut, so it, it's pretty simple. So the probability is that that gap was set up to provide the sightline distances, which for, when you're coming from a driveway like yours, onto a forty mile an hour road, is five hundred feet, which is not a small distance. So, so while I don't have all, all, you know, the only concern I have would be with safety for getting in and out, as obviously you do too, you don't, doesn't, well, actually, you're a medical center, so.
There's lots repeated, no less.
Okay, but, um, so, I mean, my.
Orthopedics, that's what I know, yeah.
So my, my only concern, and you're trying to touch on it with the health and safety sort of thing, but we might wanna look at this, you know, from what are, you know, what are we trying to do, which is, you know, protect the sightlines here. I mean, if the sight, if you can see as far as you gotta see, I, I, I'm not particularly caring where the si- sign is, you know, it doesn't do you much good below three feet unless it's wayfinding signage in the, within the parking lot, then that makes perfect sense. But, um, you know, and I, I, I think most people try to put it much higher just so they attract attention further up and down the road, but I think people are gonna know they're going to you, so to speak, but, uh.
Yeah, I have some issues just with the language, it, it's not the way the rest of our regs speak, I guess, uh, because you talk about, uh, on any sign attached to the ground, no portion of the display element shall extend below a, a height of ten feet unless it is less than a height of three feet, however, an exception is permitted. We don't allow exceptions in our zoning regs, we state how it must be. I don't know anywhere else in our regs where we allow exceptions, so that language has me.
The, the language you just read, though, is, I think they cross it out in, in one part of.
Well, they cross it out and put it back.
And they put it back.
Right.
And then they add the exception.
Yeah, my, my issue is with the, the sentence that is, an exception is permitted.
But the, the exception is permitted if they're, if they meet the twenty-foot distance.
Right, okay, and the other part I have, and.
Health, safety, welfare.
Which is totally subjective.
Which is, which is good.
Yeah, I think so, too.
You do, okay.
No, I mean, it's good because, you know, rather than try to envision every possible scenario, we have.
Sightline may be different.
We have discretion.
But that, right, and then an applicant could obviously appeal our decision, because they don't, they don't see it our way.
So, if, if it's sightlines, you know, it could be, you know, you could put an obligation on people to prove out that it's safe, okay, in accordance with the Connecticut DOT Design Manual, and/or you could, since we have a traffic commission that is used to dealing with sightline issues and safety, public safety, you know, you could.
That would be one of the things they could come in with, yeah.
You know?
Well, that, that very language, if you go to the next page in their application, and you look at our regulations for light industrial and, uh, OP is.
Office part.
Office part, you see there, there's a, um, you know, similar, similar language to, to what Judy just read, and then they, you know, um, there's the, uh, number one is the health, safety, welfare standard, but then they add number two, the police chief or his designee has reviewed and approved the height, size, and location of the sign. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to put that in as a, you know, as a condition to?
Is that the right language, the police chief, or is it, do we have a traffic?
Safety commission.
Right, maybe we want.
Which he is a member of.
I think just for this, this is the, the police chief, yeah, we have a couple provisions in our regs that point to him directly in, in case we need to call him in.
Or in the alternative, if you look at the bottom of that page, uh, there, there's a, uh, a subsection five, second sentence says, the location of the sign is subject to the approval of the zoning enforcement officer, building inspector, police department, or fire department, I mean, we could say like and/or fire department.
Yeah, should be and/or.
So I think one of those, either the police chief or his designee, or the broader, uh, recitation of other municipal department heads, I think it might make sense to include that as item number three in the, uh,
Hundred percent.
In, in the language they're talking about. You don't see that as problematic, I?
I would still rework the language that pertains to ex, an exception, you can just make the statement, a ground sign may extend up to a height of ten feet provided, boom, 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 that's how our, our regs generally are.
That's fine.
Okay, like if these three conditions are met, this can happen.
Certainly not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill here, but I, I'm a little confused with the, may extend up to a height of ten feet provided, shouldn't it be, whereas the display portion of a ground sign may extend between the three and ten feet, because we allow signs over ten feet of height and up to ten feet, but I think we should clean it up and say a ground sign may extend to between the height of three and ten feet provided they meet these. I think just to make it very clear that, you know, it may extend up to a height of ten feet doesn't really explain it very well.
I think it's very confusing.
I mean, we want to help your business, and we want to promote your business and have it be successful, it's just, we, we have to live with this for every other sign in the town, that's why we want to get it right.
It's understandable.
All right, so, on any sign attached to the ground, no portion of the display element shall extend below a height of ten feet, unless it is less than a height of three feet. So I take that to mean you could have a three-foot, uh, a sign.
Base, correct.
It's no higher than, right, or you could have a sign of ten feet.
Ten to twenty.
Ten or higher.
Ten or.
Higher.
We, we can extend up to, I think twenty-five feet is our, is our maximum height, but this just says, a portion of a ground sign may extend up to a height of ten feet provided. You can already have a, a, a sign of ten feet or more in our current regs. What they're, what I want to make sure we specify here is, they're asking for an exemption for that three to ten feet, that seven-foot, you know, gap that we have there, so whereby the display portion of a ground sign may extend between a height of three and ten feet provided.
Right.
Just, I, I think that just clarifies that a li- a little bit more.
Yeah, so you could have the, the low sign, three feet and below, you could have a.
Higher sign.
Ten feet or higher.
Ten feet or higher.
This allows someplace in the middle.
It starts, it starts at ten feet and goes higher.
Exactly.
Right, but the.
So it's all open.
Right.
And this says you can, you could have it open between three feet and seven feet.
And ten feet.
And ten, I'm sorry, and ten feet, if these conditions are met.
Correct, so you, you can play with that seven feet now if you meet these.
Means you could have a sign within that, yeah.
Between, with the display element between three and ten feet. Now you cannot have a display element higher than three or lower than ten.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know what the topography is on each of these, how this is gonna work out, but with the proviso of the, oh.
So, um, with the proviso that we have for the, uh, traffic commission and the approvals of all the, you know, municipalities.
Well, on a, on a sign application, we don't need a, a full, uh, you know, every department head does not have to sign off on a sign application, it's just myself and the building department.
That's fine.
But if we, cause we have it in elsewhere in here, if we want the police chief or his designee to have to rule on these two.
Want that authority.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I like that.
So we can add three there, or make that item number three, and maybe just clarify that three to ten feet in that, in that second sentence, I'm with you, Judy, I think it's a little.
And, and Jack, you've been in the meetings when the, the police chief and the traffic people are analyzing these types of applications, and the sightlines are one of their, uh, major concerns?
Typically, yes, I can't say I'm a regular at the traffic authority meetings, but I know that is a, a concern that they, they do discuss, is sightlines.
So if we were inclined to approve this with the changes, do they make the changes? Do we make?
They will, yeah, so, well, I mean, I guess, I guess it's either way, you know, we could say, you can make those changes and come back.
Let's agree on what.
I was gonna say, or we could just say, we can make the language, make sure they agree with it, and, and as amended, we can offer an approval, if, if we want to move in that direction.
Is that what you're thinking?
However, I I would take, it says however, comma. I would take out the words, an exception is permitted whereby.
Right.
Right?
That was my point, yeah.
I should say, how, however, comma, the display portion of a ground sign may be higher than three feet. But less than ten feet. Or it's already, but, less than a a height of ten feet, provided.
I personally would be more comfortable if we could draft it up to look at as a completed thing before we did any vote type stuff.
Yeah.
I agree. I don't, I don't see any reason to vote necessarily. I mean, this is not a a major.
You could wait two weeks.
Can wait two weeks.
Yeah, all right, so, I mean, it, it sounds like we're inclined to go along with with the concept. We just gotta get the 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 language right.
I think if we want to look at at one clean document, I think the applicant should take our input tonight, and obviously I can speak with them and work with them over the next two weeks. Then I can put revised language in front of us and and we can act on that, as opposed to us piecing it together right now.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I have what we.
Well, yeah, what what you had said I have.
But what about, what about the, including the, uh, are we gonna also require approval by the police chief or his designee, or are they more expansive?
Or.
I I think that since you're asking for more than we usually do, taking that extra step would be a reasonable request.
Yeah. So we're looking for the. Which which language?
Section five?
Section five.
Add section five as three.
Yeah, I don't think we need the first, I don't think we need the first sentence. That would be repetitive. I think that's already in there.
Okay, yeah, just started the location.
Yeah. Subject to the approval of the zoning enforcement officer, building this, uh, inspector, police department, or and or.
And or, yep.
I think we should include that as number three.
Yep.
Makes sense to me.
Let me just ask one other question. Is is this something that we? Have you, this, this hasn't gone to any of the department heads or?
No, no, this, I mean, this is just a legislative change here.
Is it something that we ought to run by the police department? This, the concept?
It's gonna be, well.
I mean, the reality is that it's gonna be run by the traffic commission. I'm a little bit confused. The police chief?
It's just the police chief, so thi- this wouldn't be something that goes in front of of the traffic commission. This is just, i- if somebody would be, let's say this gets enacted and somebody's applying for this exception, they would have to show the police chief their design and he would have to either approve that or give them the okay or say, I am not comfortable with this sign in this location. It's gonna cause problems. I'm not gonna give this the okay, to which they don't get the exception.
Okay.
Or if we want to use, the building inspector could say the same thing, the police or, uh, fire marshal.
Right, no, I was confused about the language of the traffic commission versus the.
There's no language regarding the traffic commission, is there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's.
No, there isn't.
Traffic commission.
It just, it just references the police chief, but I thought the traffic commission was the ones that were concerned about this stuff. I'm just, I'm just curious.
The traffic commission will discuss sightlines. It's not really specific to signage, though.
Okay.
You know, signage is really just something that myself and the, uh, the building official will review. But when you're, you know, when a, an application triggers a traffic, uh, review by the traffic commission, I think that's, that's when they're.
Exits.
Yeah, it's less about signage, more about a development as a whole.
More, more in connection with approving the site plan, right?
Exactly.
I mean, we can certainly, uh, reach out to Bob and just let, you know.
For sure.
Cause he may say, oh, no, you know, you don't want anything in that range, or he may be like.
Under any circumstance.
Right, we, yeah.
And twenty feet is not right. It should be thirty feet.
Right.
You know.
I don't think that will be the case.
I don't either.
Yeah.
What's, what, we would have a couple.
That's his expertise.
Let's get the language cleaned up and let him have a look at it.
Yeah, I think.
In connection with this.
Right, I think I I can, I can give.
In connection with our amendment of the.
Yeah, I I think if I give the police chief a call and explain this to him, I think he'll be able to write me up an email or some sort of memo that says he's, whether he supports it or not. In the meantime, I can work with the applicants, um, and get a revised copy for them to give to us. Um, and then we can review it at our next meeting with the police chief's recommendation.
When you're you're talking with the police chief, would you ask him if he thinks it's, uh, prudent to affirmatively require compliance with the con dot design manual sightline standards? You know, I, if he's gonna apply it, it not, doesn't necessarily need to be affirmatively.
Set.
Set, but you know, it 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 also can. But when you have actual criteria, sometimes it helps people know ahead of time what they're shooting for.
Right.
Rather than just a person's approval.
You're talking about from an application.
Yeah, from an applicant's standpoint, not, not these, you know, gentlemen necessarily, but the next person who's, uh, trying to put one right at his driveway.
Right.
You know, you know, while we're at it, um, if you, if, again, if you look at page two. And at the top of the page, you have, uh, you know, subsection D and talking about light industrial and the office, office park. And so they have subsection two, which just talks about the police chief. And down below, with respect to real estate signs, they have number five, which is the same concept, but a little.
A little more detailed.
Should we conform those? Would be my question, as long as we're amending the regulations. Could, could we do that? Is there, is there any reason not to do that at this point?
I don't think.
Or or is there a reason why it's that way?
I mean, that, I mean, we could, I think if the applicant doesn't mind including that, but it sounds like we're kind of amending our own regs as an applicant is in front of us, that might. There are a lot of sections of our regs that, you know, we might want to do a full, full sweep up, and I hate to say it.
Well, the, the.
But if we do want to.
The signs, the signs part was reviewed not that long ago, right?
Then.
Feels like yesterday.
Then that's fine. I mean, I just don't want to get the applicants, you know, revising language that they don't really have anything to do with, just because we're, we're uncomfortable with the way it's written now. I think, I think we could, you know, I don't think there'd be an issue.
Considering this is our legislative function and our regulation, yeah, we can do whatever we want. Whether it applies to them or not.
No, we can, but I'm saying on, upon our own initiative, if we want to submit our own amendment, that's one thing. I don't want to get our applicants tied up in a whole amendment, you know, changing language that they didn't even ask to change before.
Okay.
You know, but I I I don't think we're talking about anything real controversial here. I'm sure they, you know, would feel comfortable doing it.
They could withdraw their application. We write the reg. We fix where we want to fix. You know, make sure we understand their goal.
I think, I think I can work, i- if we decide that we want to change number, number two under section D, if we want to make it, yeah, number five.
Yep.
I think in my communication with the applicant, you know, we we can see if they would feel comfortable doing that as well.
Yeah, I can't see why the applicant would.
I don't, I don't either, but like I said, I mean, that, I just don't want to pull them into a major revision when they're not asking to change those sections.
All right, so we're gonna make the few changes that we talked.
I I think we we have a good grasp on this, yeah.
And we're, once we, and after we've made the changes between now and the next meeting, yeah, let Chief Gagny take a look at it.
So within, in our next two weeks before the meeting, I'll work with the applicant and get this cleaned up with our provisions, and I will speak with, uh, Chief Gagny.
All right, we'll leave the, leave the public, uh, hearing open.
Yep.
Yep.
At this point?
Leave it open at this point, and our next meeting, I want to say, is the second.
All right, well, it's, there, there's nobody in the public, so asking for comment is, uh,
Best kind.
Not worthwhile. Uh, so, all right, so we'll dispense with that, but anyway, um, all right, we'll leave this open and we'll, we'll get to it in our, at our next meeting. You, you guys clear on?
Yes, yes, so we will communicate with, um, with Jack.
Yeah, I mean, we're agreeable to the concept. We just gotta clean up some language here. And, uh, let the, let the police chief take a look at it, make sure he's not.
Yeah, I think that's all very reasonable, and, um, I I think that's a good way to move forward.
All right, and then I would, I would say we could finish this up at our next meeting. Okay?
Thank you all very much.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, that, uh, that takes care of our agenda for this evening.
Who?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cornell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.